For the planning commission. I start to get a little more excited about it when they start to come in for the third or fourth because at that point it's looking like the project's not going to happen. But I don't see, you know, personally, I don't see any harm in one more extension on this project. But the book can, you know, if it's the planning commission and township board's desire, you know, they should know that a third extension might not be forthcoming from the township. At that point, the project would just expire.
Commissioner Holland.
So I, my criteria is what is the reason? And I think that there's, there's good reason at this point that there was a pandemic and, and just construction, construction just really couldn't proceed in a lot of cases unless it was critical infrastructure. And so he had an extension, he couldn't use it is what it comes down to. So I'd be wanting to go, you know, I think we wanted to go 12 or 15 months. You know, that get them through a construct, through the next construction season because as we all know, finding people to do anything is very, very difficult. And that's my feeling is I'd like to see it extended for say 15, 15 months. That take them through August, September and October as far as a start time. Does that make sense, Doug? Or should we just talk 12? You're muted.
As long as they start within that time, they could, if you guys let them go 12 months or 15 months, you know, they could start at the very last day. As long as they pull a zoning compliance, they're fine. They don't have to be done, they just have to start.
I can support 12.
Yeah. And, and I, I mean, I, I think there are, just with the whole, the pandemic, there has been significant issues around real estate, construction, pricing. You know, even the road commission delayed the roundabout because of pricing. So I, I, I think it makes a lot of sense at this point in time. Okay, any other comments? We'll entertain a motion. Is there a commissioner that would like to put forth a, the motion? There is the model language for it.
This is Sia West Center.
It is.
Based upon the site plan, site plan 18912, Sia West Center, request for an extension. Based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds good cause for the extension of site plan 18912 Sia West Center and recommends approval. The site, the site plan extension is granted with the following condition. The site plan extension shall be valid for a period of 12 months.
There's support.
Is that the right number, Jan, you think?
I think, especially since it's the second one.
Since it's the second one, I agree.
Is there support? Support for Commissioner Moore? Any further discussion? So the motion for granting the site plan extension for Sia West Center. Roll call vote, please.
Still waiting, hang on a minute. Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes. Okay.
Carrie.
Okay, and then we're moving on to OAPUD FSP number 19010 Parkland Plaza Senior Living Site Plan Extension Request. And I think you're up again, Joe.
Yep, so what I'll do is I'll, again, this one's been out there for a little while and I'll just share my screen, go through the site plan with you here. So this project, which is a senior housing living center, is at the end of Parkland Plaza Drive and Eagle Point Drive. As you know, Sia View is currently under construction, building homes at the end of Parkland Plaza. They have the extension off there. Previously, we've already done the work to clear the site and preserve, basically not really preserve, but have the trees reused off the site.
I hear you.
We have been working with township's board to work on the pathway that is running through here. And we've worked with the owner to actually relocate sidewalk that was proposed there. Let me show you a quick idea here. So originally, the sidewalk was going to run down this east side of Parkland Plaza with the design that OHM is doing. It was recommended that it comes down the west side and cross in front of the apartment complex here and then continue on. So the owners have agreed to make that change. That'll be a minor change coming back to the planning commission, actually pretty shortly, once we get the final design documents from OHM to have a pedestrian crossing here just south of Eagle Point Drive into our site. And then again, crossing at the other end of the bulb going to the township's new parking lot, gravel parking lot here. So the site has a mixture of use of underground infiltration. I think it's 95 senior housing center, living facility, underground parking to help preserve majority of the natural features around the property. As you can see, we've got a hundred foot buffer all the way around. The site has significant large trees and the underground parking helped preserve a majority of those. That was all done through the site plan process as a PUD with, you know, the pathway and the parking lot, all its public benefits to the township. So real quick, just give you an idea of the final landscaping view here. You can see it's basically heavily treeed and we're adding in a lot of trees, a lot of mitigation trees, trees around the township's parking lot here. So this project is in process. The owner is actively getting their financing in order. We just didn't think we would get the application back in time for our expiration, but they should be coming back August, September, October, coming up here pretty quickly to get zoning compliance and a recon meeting scheduled to get this project underway. So we're just being proactive and getting the extension done now in order to, you know, for them to be able to complete that process.
Okay, thank you. And I assume this is the same reason as the prior extension request because of the pandemic.
Yeah, it was a lot to do with costs, trying to keep the cost under control for the project. You have a very extensive, you know, landscaping plan, courtyard, pool. There's a lot of amenities that go on with this project that really, you know, they want to make sure they get it right. They're working with a building contractor already. So they've got a general contractor selected, architects working on, you know, finalizing interior designs, interior building materials, carpets, all that stuff are being selected right now and organized and priced out so that they can get a good, good quality product.
Joe, do you have a rendering in that packet?
Actually, I don't. I just realized that I don't have the full render.
Or an elevation or anything. I mean, it's just, I don't think the new panic should have seen, this is quite a, this is quite a project with like most of its parking underground. It's pretty impressive.
I have to concur. This is one of the, I have to say, one of the highest quality projects that
We've approved.
Approved since I've been on the commission, which isn't as long as you. Anyway, they've really done a lot to maintain the buffer as, as Joe pointed out. And it sounds like they're also further along than perhaps the other one that we just approved. So I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Corto.
Sorry, had a hard time hitting that unmute button. Based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds good cause for the extension of OAPUD 19010 Parkland Plaza Senior Living and recommends approval of the request. The site plan extension is granted with the following conditions. The site plan extension shall be valid for a period of 12 months.
Commissioner Hyde. Okay. Then is there further discussion on the motion to approve the extension request for 12 months? Right? Hopefully that bought you enough time. Secretary Holland, roll call vote.
Yes. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma. Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes.
Pass is 6-0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Yep, have a good night.
All right, moving along. We, in our packet, there are updated in-person Zoom meeting procedures. And the Board of Trustees is basically asking boards and commissions to come back to a hybrid where the, the meeting is conducted in the township hall. And I think Commissioner Hyde, Commissioner Sharma, and I are gonna, I'm gonna also kind of put my hat in the ring, will be trained so that we can use it for some other meetings as well. And so I just wanted to get sort of the temperature if we want to go back and start meeting at the township hall beginning, I think it's August 9th would be our first meeting. So we would be going back in person. And the trustees, have they successfully held a hybrid meeting?
So the first hybrid meeting was held on Saturday, a special meeting on July 9th, 10th, 10th, sorry. There, we had a few technical glitches, but we did end up with both trustees and audience. Some were participating remotely. Actually, all of the audience except for presenters participated remotely, whereas majority of the board was in person with some participating remotely. And I should say that although the, the board is recommending that commissions try to start this process in August, I, I believe if, if I'm remembering the details, they, they are allowing commissions to make the decision. So it's, they're encouraging committees to do this, but not requiring.
So what you're saying is that we can choose either or participate remotely or be in person when as suitable.
So we can choose to return to meeting in person, which would be a hybrid meeting for the remainder of, of this calendar year. Even if we go back to in-person meeting, commissioners could at their discretion continue to participate remotely without having to provide any reason. And then starting in 2022, when the Washtenaw County rule under which we're operating to do this ends, then there may be different requirements. So in the past, remote participation was only allowed for military reasons or sort of documented health reasons. And so you had to provide a reason. But for 2021, we do not have to provide any reason if we choose to participate remotely.
So thoughts from commissioners? Commissioner Hyde.
Just thank you. To extend on what Commissioner Corto just said, I think that's also what the public can do through the end of the year. The hybrid means that the public can participate remotely or in person. Is that correct?
Yes.
I like the option of being able to participate remotely. So that's, I like that option.
Even as a commissioner?
Even as a commissioner.
So I, I was involved.
Likewise.
Okay.
I was in a DDA meeting today and, and it was a hybrid meeting. And it was, I think the meeting carried on much better meeting in person. But I know the public wants to be able to just not take any of their time and just drop in, which is fine. In the Open Meetings Act, a lot of people just dropped. There's one person that came to the meeting and about six others that just wanted to pop in and see what we're doing. So I don't have a problem with participating in person, I think, as, as a, as a board and a commission, we operate much better.
So I, wait in if you want to know what I think. I, I like the option of being able to zoom in. I don't mind participating in person. Will, will we be meeting in the larger area where the, the board meets?
Okay. Yeah.
And I, I would like to get the training on the, I guess it would be called the hybrid meeting training.
Yeah. And actually, only one person, I guess, my understanding is that one person operates sort of the, the Zoom and the two screens. So not everybody does that. If you're, if you're there, you're participating as if you're in person. Yeah, so it would only be if, you know, you're gonna, you know, be a part of some other meetings. I know, you know, Commissioner Holland and Hyde and I, a couple of us, you know, participate with some other groups. So that would be the purpose of the training.
So how, how does it work if, if commissioners are, are on Zoom and some commissioners are in the room and, and as far as participation? I've been in some meetings where that was how it took place and it was frankly a train wreck.
So I had to participate remotely for this meeting on Saturday. And what I gather is that the commission or the trust front of the room, and then there are very large screens on the back of the room where the, the sort of Zoom face, the Zoom screen of, of any other person on the committee or board are projected. So when I raised my hand to be acknowledged to speak, I, it was fine. And in fact, if anything, I think maybe because the screens were so prominent in the back of the room, it seemed like the two trustees participating remotely maybe had a little bit of an easier time getting recognized to speak than, than some of the people sitting on the side. So I think there's just some balancing to, to, I mean, it's small to tasking, right? You, you have to pay attention to the screen and you have to pay attention to the people in the room. And it's just a skill we all have to work on.
What did you, what did you see remotely then? You know, what we saw in the room is, on our screen was just a one camera on the entire group sitting around a big rectangular table.
Right. That's what I saw part of the time, but there were presenters. I think there are two different cameras. So there's one in the back of the room and there's one in the front of the room. So when there were presentations, the, someone switched to the front of the room camera. And, and on both of those, there was an option to zoom in closer on the presenter or a little bit closer on, on the board. So I think there, I think part of the experience will depend on the Zoom operators and the camera operators gaining the skill to know how to take full advantage of those possibilities. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I wasn't aware that there were multiple, going to be multiple cameras on different parts of the process.
It seemed like there were two.
So let's, a straw raise of hands, how many people would be, how many commissioners would come back in, in person if we started on the, the 9th of, of August? If you could just raise your hand and get an idea? Okay. That's pretty good. And you, okay, possibly. All right. Any objection? Because one of the things that's helpful is with, like we found out with the notice tonight, you know, you do notice it a little differently if it's going to be a hybrid meeting versus a virtual meeting. So that's why I think it's important to plan ahead. And so then, how about if we, are there any objections to going back on, planning on going back on August 9th?
Can I just say one thing? I'm concerned about the development of the Delta variant. And we should know something pretty soon because it's all over our country.
Yeah, yeah.
It's supposed to be predominant positives happening all over in all the states.
What's that?
Yeah, I mean, like Michigan's in the top 25 states right now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, so maybe we, we say we plan, but obviously we'll take into account health issues, public health issues as they, they come along. You know, given where we are now, it makes sense if things get worse, then we, we have the option of, of going virtual again. Commissioner Corto.
I think the main implication, if we were to decide to go ahead and do hybrid meetings and then the Delta variant rose and commissioners became concerned about appearing in person, we would still have some, I mean, all of us could take the option of participating remotely, but there would still have to be somebody at township hall to be there in case members of the public came and interact and, and run meeting setup. So, but that is the main concern. We would have to make sure that we can have somebody there to run the meeting, even if every one of us decides that we will be remote.
Hey Doug, how do you feel about that?
That sounds reasonable. I'm, I'm listening, yeah.
Okay.
So what I've been hearing is, is we would know more about how ravaged Delta will be to our communities in the fall when people start going back inside. So is it, is it, is August 9th a target date that is being pushed for some particular reason or that's just something you came up with? Or could we target September? Or would people be open to, open to targeting September?
Yeah, I think it was the way it's, it's, you know, they, I think the, if you look in the packet, August, August 1st was the suggested
I see.
Time for commissioners to come back, at least in a hybrid mode.
Question.
Commissioner Corto?
Yeah?
Well, just, just to explain that briefly, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sharma. Just, just the background of that was the Board of Trustees wanted to start meeting again in person as possible in this hybrid mode. So they decided that rather than making everybody do it on July 1st, they would spend a month trying to make sure that worked and recommend that as commissions could engage in that, they could start on August 1st. But to answer Commissioner Moore's question, that's not a hard and fast recommendation. Every commission or board can make their own choice about whether they want to return to in-person hybrid meetings or what date they would do it. So it, it would be within the planning commission's discretion to decide, no, we want to wait until September 1st or October 1st or, or whatever date or table and wait. I, I don't, I mean, I think we have
Split the difference and do mid-August, the second mid-August or whatever. So.
Well, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to be disruptive. I just, I, I do am concerned about the flexibility to go back should things get worse. I'm a, I'm a vulnerable individual, so that's a concern.
Okay.
Are we required, is the public, is it, everybody is it mandatory to have a mask when people come to the township hall? No.
The policy is what follows the state guidelines, which is that fully vaccinated people are not required to mask.
Bingo.
Masks are requested for those who are not vaccinated, but of course, we don't really have a way to check that. Nobody is at the door screening.
That is the root of the problem. We don't know who is vaccinated and not. The state doesn't require us to do that. So people with vaccination, without vaccination, whatever will come to the meeting. We have to decide our risk from here as a group.
So I'm hearing some, some caution about maybe not declaring the 9th. Other, I mean, it's important. It sounds like we have a couple of people that have, you know, real risks and I have one at home, so.
Like I said, I don't, I don't want to be an impediment to moving forward. So, I mean, I'll try, I'm willing to try it despite my reservations about moving so fast, but I, I understand the need for it and I understood what, what Commissioner Holland was saying about meeting in person. I just did the pre-app meeting the other day and that was the first time I've been face to face with Doug. So I, I get it. So whatever, whatever, whatever the majority wants to do.
Is, is hybrid still an option in August?
Yes, it, they will always be hybrid. So, yeah. So I think it, it gives, you know, commissioners the, the option to be remote as well. And, and I think that, you know, if, if there are, you know, concerns, then we'll be able to weigh in and maybe it's a, you know, if it's going to be a controversial meeting, there may be some people who, you know, aren't comfortable if they're, they think that they're going to be a, a large group of people there either. So, you know, you can, there's some flexibility that way.
So again, just to reemphasize, any, any commissioner can for any reason, and, and they do not have to state the reason, participate remotely through the end of 2021. So everybody can assess their own comfort level, their own risk factors, the other, the risk factors of the public meeting space in making the decision and can choose whether to come in person or participate remotely through the end of 2021, whatever we decide.
And I do think it makes sense to go back when a reasonable group of commissioners want to meet in person. I think it, it becomes more difficult, you know, to be on multiple formats, you know, obviously, but you'd, you'd want, you know, a core there, I believe.
There, the consensus I've heard from some other groups is that, that particularly in a public hearing and so on, that, and, and that, and as far as the public coming, is that if they don't have to meet someone face to face, you know, it's, it's like cyberbullying. You know, if it's not face to face, it's really easy. And that, that's one of the, one of the issues of not having meetings in person is that people, you know, of course, they, you know, they can come virtually and, and be ugly if they want. But I, I think that's not the way it was intended to be.
All right, so a raise of hands again. How many want to try it for August 9th?
In person?
Yeah. Or, or start, well, it's hybrid, you know.
Hybrid, yeah, yeah, hybrid is fine. You have to do one way or the other, right? So that's a no brainer.
Right, okay.
I don't think you need to pull for that.
So, so Planning Commission will move to the hybrid format August 9th so we can start, you know, with any kind of notifications that we need to, to do for that. Okay. All right, then let's run through our reports. OHM, do you have anything?
Oh, we don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay. Mr. Luhan?
Nothing.
Okay. I just want to give an update. Our, the meeting on the 26th, we're going to plan on having a presentation by the, the two interns who have been, they're going to, they've sort of compiled their research and sort of orientation. And they're going to give that to the, it's a short presentation to the Planning Commission. So everybody has, you know, kind of the same background. And I think we have, I've received nine people interested in serving on the Environmental Task Force from engineers. And thank you, Jay, Dana did, did submit his to folks that, you know, one guy works for DTE and folks that are involved in recycling pretty heavily and.
Is Dana going to do it?
Yes.
Wow, good. Good resource, excellent resource.
Yeah. There's also an environmental engineer, as well as Dana's a civil engineer. And so on the 26th, we'll have a, a list of people and sort of a, a brief synopsis of, of their backgrounds. And hopefully we can kind of move forward and start scheduling the first task force kickoff in, in August. And Commissioner Hyde has volunteered to be the Planning Commission rep. I, I would like to stay involved in it. And then we'll be finding out, there'll be a trustee or two as well. And so, you know, that'll tie some of the other people who have multiple roles on parks and land preservation and so forth can, can participate. The other thing is, I think they're going to, the Road Commission, the SAD Advisory Committee, or I forget what the official name of that is, maybe starting up again. Is, yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to address that.
You are, great, okay. And so that was my report, so go on. And I'll just say Zoning Board of Appeals didn't meet, so Commissioner Cotto, the Board of Trustees.
Okay, so I did want to talk in a little bit of detail about roads because that was the subject of our special meeting on the 10th. The Washtenaw County Road Commission presented an overview of their operations in CIO and sources of road funding. And Lou Kidder, who has in the past been the Chair of the Local Roads Advisory Committee, presented an overview of the work done by that committee from 2006 through 2018 in setting priorities for the township-wide road SAD as well as for advising individual neighborhood-based road SADs. And then he provided a work of, an overview of all the work that have been done under those two different modes. Residents at the past two meetings have raised a number of questions about the description of road SADs that appears currently in the master plan. So I think this is something that we need to work on. They have suggested that we need to work to further clarify the table showing the work that has been done, perhaps to provide a brief description of what work was actually done. And also that we take care to note on the table and map what is past action and what is a future plan? Because there's been a lot of concern that the numbers that appear on the table are somehow indicating a plan for future work and it's contributing to a sense that there's a plan afoot to pave roads that, that, that people don't know about. So I think we need to be very careful and very clear in our master plan presentation in both the table and the map to explain what has been done and, and what, if anything, is planned. So that's the master plan portion.
One comment on that, if you could just write up that as a request so it gets logged in with the, the comments?
Thank you, I will do that. In addition, the BOT discussed reviving the Local Roads Advisory Committee or assembling a new short-term study committee to report back on a range of both short-term plans and long-term visioning and planning issues around roads. The BOT will be voting on this committee and its charge, or the plan was to vote on Tuesday tomorrow, but I believe the decision has been made to maybe vote in two weeks instead. And I just wanted to say, I would welcome views from Planning Commissioners on whether or how the Planning Commission could connect to or participate in the local roads effort, including the question of whether there ought to be the equivalent of a master plan for roads. And then also how we, as well as TAP, can address roads, pathways and planning in an integrated way. So I just want to, I really welcome your views, maybe offline, or if it's appropriate to discuss it a bit now, how we make sure that planning is, is both aware of and also feeding into thinking about roads. But before we have discussion on that, I did want to just briefly note another issue that came up for discussion at the previous regular meeting and will likely be voted on tomorrow is the issue of pursuing a local historic designation from Washtenaw County for a house and barn on a CIO-owned property on West Liberty prior to selling the house and barn and a five-acre parcel in order to help protect this part of our rural heritage and landscape. So the township has previously approved local historic designations for the Delhi Bridge and for the Gordon Hall House and Property. And I just wanted to bring to the attention to the Planning Commission that there is an option for properties that do have historic resources. And doing this kind of designation can allow tax credits for the owners to renovate rather than tear down old buildings of historic significance. So I just think it's important for us to keep in mind if there are parcels that have old homes and barns that could be integrated into a site, that we make sure to convey that information clearly to applicants that there would be some potential tax credits for renovation as part of an option for working on those sites.
And those exist, both state and federal at that, at this point.
Yes, there are both. I think the local historic designation, that I think it's, well, you know, I'm not going to say anything further. We, we're going to bring on an expert. And, and we could, if we wanted to, ask for a presentation to us, to the Planning Commission, about some of the details about how this would work. But. I'm sorry, Commissioner Moore, did you?
So can I ask you a question? Yeah, would this cover buildings that have already been renovated? I have a neighbor of mine that redid a couple of years ago, 1800 Hundreds Barn on Marshall Road.
That's a very good question. I don't know the answer, but if you send me an email, I will connect you to the person who does.
I'll talk to him about it, they may be interested.
Thank you. And then for the LPC, no new matters arising, the LPC will be meeting this week.
DDA?
DDA, well, DDA met today. And we donated, in our business, we donated $5,000 to Ann Arbor Spark. We're moving forward with bus shelters. ATA is pleased that we're having five bus shelters erected along the Jackson Boulevard. They are, they, they're just finishing up the acquisition of the land or the easements and getting the details worked out. They more or less have a kind, DDA is a contractor. The bus shelters are sitting in vacant warehouse donated by Malloy. We're, we're doing a brown, brownfield management for Holmes Brewery that they've got through the state. We're dealing with feeder roads, we're, we're participating in financing repaving of Enterprise Drive. They're, let's see. We're helping with the sidewalks in Parkland Plaza. We're going to check for $75,000 for that. A long, long discussion on the, maybe doing a sewer study or doing something regarding the sewer as Planning Commission starts talking, has been talking about the possibility of using the sewer along Jackson Boulevard. There's concern that we may run out of sewer and it may end up blighting some properties. So we're, we're looking into that. And they, we've voted to remove the signs along the, the number of signs, address signs that point you in the median of Jackson Boulevard, but it's up to the trustees to make that decision.
I noticed, U of M must have paid for the, the redo of the park, the ones that go into Parkland Plaza or something. Because I noticed those numbers were.
Yeah, that was kind of a contentious thing because that sign for Parkland Plaza, you know, they sort of just took it over. You know, there was a sign there and U of M really didn't, it was a little contentious because not everybody in Parkland Plaza got to be listed. But it's, in any event, it cleaned, it cleaned up the whole, we don't look so rural down there anymore. Let's just look at, let's say that.
Yeah, Doug, I think Jackie had to call back in and that may be her, you may want to promote her back into the panel.
There's also been some discussion about extending the DDA because if, for instance, anything needs to be done about the North Jackson Road corridor, we're not, and not much of a position to sell bonds since DDA expires in eight years. So we're talking about having to extend the DDA, which is going to be a project. Any questions? Sorry, I've got so much to say, but thought you might be interested in what's going on in DDA.
Yeah, that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
All right. Road Commission, anything? LPC? Oh, there was nothing. Nothing for the ZOA? Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec. There are some decisions that we've made that we're recommending to the Board of Trustees on going forward on Marshall Park, as well as some improvements to the Sloan Preserve parking lot and its entrance. So that's going, both of those will be going to the Board of Trustees for their approval. And if I could say about Huron River Watershed Council, there's no update. We have our next meeting on the 22nd. So there should be something for our next meeting.
Okay. Great. So unless anyone knows anything or wants to say anything about TAP, because Commissioner Chang is not with us tonight. Okay. Then we'll move on to, we have two sets of minutes, one for June 14th and one for June 28th. And we'll take the minutes for June 14th first. Any corrections or additions to the June 14th minutes? I just lost them. I have one on page three, under the Chair Report. It should say the Environmental Task Force recruitment. Insert the word force in between task and recruitment. Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 14th minutes as amended.
I move that we approve the June 14th, 2021, 14th minutes as amended.
Support?
Or?
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde to approve the June 14th, 21 minutes as amended. Are we ready for a roll call vote? I think you're muted, Jay.
No, I'm not ready for a roll call vote. Who, who made the motion?
Commissioner Moore and supported by Commissioner Hyde.
Okay, and that's the six 14 minutes?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Sharma? Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Cotto?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Culberson?
Yes.
Passed 6-0.
Okay, then we're moving to the 6:28 minutes. Any?
You know, the packet does not have the June 28th minutes.
No, they were, they were posted under the June 28th meeting as draft, as minutes. That's what happened, that's why they got sent out via email to, yeah, because they were in the. For, for, I, I'm not sure how this, the website piece works, but evidently they couldn't insert it in the packet and it went in to those minutes, that minute location. location. All right, if people had a chance, perhaps not everyone reviewed them beforehand.
Move that we approve the minutes from June 28th, 2021.
There's support?
Support from Corto.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Corto, to approve the minutes of 6:28, 21. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Corto?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Culberson?
Yes.
Passed, passed the 6-0.
Then are there, is there any other business to come before our Planning Commission?
Move to adjourn.
Right. Motion to adjourn, is there support? Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Sharma, to adjourn, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Corto?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Culberson?
Yes. We are adjourned at 10:02.
10:02.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Night.
Night.
Dan, what do I do with these minute, with, with these notes? I was asleep at the wheel when we, did we actually have a vote on the, on the, whether we're going to be in person or Zoom?
We didn't have a vote, we
Consensus?
The consensus. Yeah, we consented.
We had consensus that we would start the hybrid in-person Zoom meetings on August 9th of 2021.
And just get those to Christie, Jay.
Yeah.
All right.
I can just scan and email these two, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's August 9th, was it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, see you guys. Shutting her down.